I would like to call the Planning Commission to order. Our first order of business is to hold a public hearing. The public hearing is to consider a zoning district map change from A1 residential, single-unit district to A2 residential, multi-unit district for the following property, 1700 Hillsborough Road. Tax map number 0174-17-08-003. Is there anyone here to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name. And if we could limit it to five minutes, because we want everybody to get a chance to speak. So whoever would like to go first, just please come forward and state your name for the record, name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Chuck Nichols, representing Crescent Oaks Association, right off of Hillsborough and Wells. But I don't have any comments yet, but my question is, we've done this when, last year or the year before?
November 17th of '22.
'22, okay. So my question is, why are we having to do this again?
It was, it had been over a year and it was re-presented by the property owner.
Okay, that's the only question I have. If I have some other comments, I'll come back.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Matt Burlison. My address is 1340 Hillsborough Road. I was basically calling just to try to find out some information, just in a quick Google search. It looks like this parcel's about 1.3, 1.4 acres of land. And I'm trying, I mean, Martha, my wife and I, we have a little over four acres of land right on Hillsborough Road. And I couldn't dare imagine trying to zone my lot as a multi-unit property, and that's a little over four acres. So I was just trying to figure out, I mean, if I could put a Chick-fil-A maybe in my front yard, I might would do that. But I couldn't imagine possibly trying to put multifamily homes on the small parcel that we own. And judging by the amount of traffic that's already present on Hillsborough Road, I couldn't imagine that this would be, that this would be in the benefit of anyone that's currently on the road itself. So that's just the comments that I wanted to make briefly here.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing?
I'm Arden Weathers and I live in Cloystock Cove. And the wisdom of this committee and county council a year or so ago decided that it wasn't a good idea. And I wonder what's changed, what new wisdom has occurred to make it come back here. There are several things that I think will impact negatively. One is, if you go all the way down Hillsborough, from one end to the other, there's not one apartment. There are four large blocks down that area, and I think the entire area has not one single multifamily dwelling. So these people moved into this area with the full intent of living in an area where there were single-family dwellings. That's one problem. Second problem is, the property backs up to a residential area of single homes that G.W. Berry has developed while he was alive. Being backed up to apartments certainly is going to devalue those properties and the lots that are still there for sale. It will also devalue the problem, in my opinion, the properties that are adjacent to it. Thirdly, there are multiple traffic problems. Short Street, or Little Street, or whatever its name is. I looked yesterday and the day before, it will hold three and a half cars to four cars, depending on the size of the cars. Sometimes they're backed all the way up onto Hillsborough, onto the street that runs by Sheridan School. And so it would be difficult for people in an apartment to get out during high-volume hours. It's a relatively dangerous intersection, Columbia Road. In fact, we talked with a policeman this week, and he said it was the one or second most dangerous intersection in the city. So it would add more traffic to that. It would add traffic trying to get off of the bypass, trying to get up that short street. So traffic in each direction is going to be impacted in a negative way. Also, there are several businesses right there in that short mall. One of them, I think, is an ambulance service, which could or could not, depending on the time of day, have difficulty getting out. So, and lastly, apartments, by history, for the most part, bring in young people with loud noises, and sometimes the apartments aren't well-maintained. And that's another kind of negative for our area, as we all moved into this area, hoping that it would stay single-home dwellings. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Joanne Lightfoot. And I live in the Orchard, the subdivision right off Hillsborough Road. And from what I gather, where y'all want to have it changed from A1 to A2, it's going to be the section right behind our houses, where that strip mall is now, kind of across from that. We only have, several of our houses, mine included, and the ones that's behind me, we only, it's only a small strip of woods between us and that area. So if y'all would have potatoes woods down, that's going to put them right behind us. There would have to be something put up to separate our houses from the back of whatever y'all, they're planning on building. And I assume maybe apartments or duplexes, I don't know what's going to be built. But I moved there, I'm probably going to take a little bit longer than five minutes, if it's okay. But I built my house seven years ago in Orchard, because it was such a pretty place. It was nice and quiet, and it still is. Ever since I've been there, I have felt very safe. And it's mostly, everybody there is older people. I think we have one young gentleman that, he's less than 50. But the rest of us are older, and I mean, we feel safe. The police rides through there at night and the daytime, but it's very quiet. I can leave my house and not even turn the alarm on. I feel very comfortable about that. But I feel like, when you start building, and if you build apartments or duplexes or something like that, then you're going to have families coming in, young families coming in. And young families means young children coming in, and dogs coming in. And so it's not going to be quiet like it is now. The children are going to be outside playing, and I mean, that's normal. But, and we're going to have probably loud music from some of them. And like he said, there's going to be a whole lot more cars. But another thing that bothers me, when you put something like that, I mean, I know how much I paid for my house, and it was quite a bit. And I just don't want to put something like that that's going to come in and lower the price of my house. When I'm going and my children sell it, then I want my house to go up in value, not down, like cars. And I'm afraid that would hurt the value of all of our houses in there, what we paid for it. But I would just, I would like for, and also, if this happens, and I don't know that it will, I hope y'all will decide not to do this. But if it does, I would ask that, please, y'all will build something up, a high privacy fence behind this place, so that they will not be able to come into the Orchard. And we will still feel safe, and it will still be quiet like it is now for us. So let's see if I got anything else on here. That's the main thing. I mean, everybody that came tonight, they feel the same way I do, that they like living there, they like feeling safe, because a lot of us live by ourselves. And I'm not saying that if you put apartments there, it's going to make it more dangerous anything, but I don't know, it's just going to be more people, more sirens. We have a lot of sirens now, but more sirens, and just more noise. So I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Karma Livingston. I live at 310 Old Orchard Way. Next door to Joanne who just spoke. She has said most everything that is of great concern to me, as a single woman, senior. Oh, and I need to reiterate, because I don't think it's been mentioned thus far, the Orchard is a senior community, a minimum age of 55 to live there. And I don't know for certain, but maybe these ladies could help me with it. But I do believe that the majority of those residents there are well over 55, very well over 55. Social Security is utmost important to me, for all of us. We are very, very safe, feel very, very safe there. That's why the homes were purchased and built there, was because of the ability to feel contained, safe, and with a group of people that would understand our needs and our ways of living. So I had not thought until you spoke about all the issues around traffic, et cetera, and how that's going to affect us greatly. But we have a foot-traffic problem, as well as motor-vehicle traffic, in that the house that is directly behind mine is the house on Hillsborough that burned, and you may not know of it. That house and lot have remained empty and uninhabited since. I've had a challenge with a path being cut from behind that house, leading up to my bedroom window. I've not been able to see anyone or catch anyone to be able to report it necessarily, but it was a very clear pathway to my bedroom window behind there. So of course, I have great concern for other people maybe being able to have foot access there. And as Joanne said, we certainly would not want to lose the barrier of a wooded strip that separates the two sets of properties. As a matter of fact, if I'm accurate, the property line runs through the middle of the barrier, wooded barrier between the two streets. In which case, if they did decide to clear it, that would reduce the barrier on our side to a much smaller portion, therefore increasing the possibility of our loss of security and a sense of safety. And I'm sure I'm probably going to have five minutes, but guess what? I could do it for another 50. I request, only request, that you give due consideration to the concerns of the residents that are joining these properties that are in consideration, as well as an empty lot beside me that no one is occupying and can speak for, but will be definitely affected by any changes to the properties as they exist, and I thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Patricia Connolly, and I live at 1693 Hillsborough Road. I live on the corner, right there, by Little Street, visiting nurses and all. The traffic is horrendous, and that house was the first house ever built on Hillsborough. My husband and I, we are younger than a lot of people, but security is a concern, traffic, school buses, they don't stop, you know? And it's hard to get out of my yard in the mornings, and so people just, you know, security is a concern, and I just don't think it's a good idea.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Patsy Journey, and I live at 230 Old Orchard Way. And when I moved back to Orangeburg, I'm originally from Orangeburg. I moved away, but I moved back in 2019. And my husband and I, we looked all over Orangeburg. Matter of fact, we looked at, believe it or not, 17 houses before we decided on this house in Old Orchard Way. And the reason we decided on it is because it was what we were looking for, something quiet, not a lot of traffic, and not a lot of noise. And I have thoroughly enjoyed living there. All the ones that are residents up to of Old Orchard Way, I'm sure, just what they said, it's going to increase the traffic, it will probably, we will probably have a lot more noise. And I just think it's not a good thing to zone, to change the zoning from what it is now to residential, too.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Yeah, good afternoon. My name is Thomas Reed, and I live at 200 Old Orchard Way, in the Orchard. My concern is, what is this going to mean for the Orchard itself? Will that change the classifications inside the Orchard? Or will there be different, will it change the complexity of the property inside the Orchard itself? I mean, will they be able to build? I don't know what Ms. Berry has in mind for the Orchard, I mean, you know? What is that, what is that going to do?
Ms. Williams, do you know if it would affect the Orchard? Our zoning officials said it would not affect y'all's classification in the Orchard.
Yeah, and also, the street that's behind the Orchard, I know there's property back there, that would be included in this new zoning?
No, no, just the property that's being put up.
Just the property that was burned?
Pardon me?
The property that was destroyed, the burned, where the house was destroyed?
No.
This means, does it mean the community? Yeah. Okay.
If we were in the chambers, we could have it up on the screen.
Yeah.
But Ms. Williams has a map that she could share with you.
Yeah. Yeah, because that's my concern, will it change the complexity of the, I don't know what Berry's have in mind for the Orchard.
It's just going to affect the property that's being put up, am I correct?
Maybe build multiple things inside Orchard themselves, I don't know.
No, it won't change where you're living. It's just, it's just for the property that's being put up.
Yeah. Okay, that's my question.
All right, thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward, so everybody can hear you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Barbara Beach, 175 Holly Creek. I was just with someone here, and they wanted to know, what are they asking to put on the...
Well, it's presented to us to change it from single district to, single district residential to multi-unit district, so it would be...
So no plan, I mean, not like, you don't know whether it would be a duplex, or, you know, four houses, four apartments, or what?
I think it could be either one.
Okay, so there's no plans that were submitted with the...
Yeah, no plans, nope, no plans have been submitted yet.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Sandu, would you like to address the commission?
Sure, let everybody else speak.
Okay. All right. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Is there any, please, please come forward and state your name. All righty.
I think Mr. Reed was referring to the property behind his house. It's also, he lives right next to me on one side, and I think he was referring to all that wooded area behind our house, that he was asking about, would it affect that? Because all that's vacant faces Wells Drive.
Yeah, as far as I know, this is just this piece of property that's being put up. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward. Please state your name and address again for the record, so we'll have it on paper.
I just want to make sure you hear me. Joanne Lightfoot, and I live at 320 Old Orchard Way. And my house backs up, half of it, to where the White House burnt down. Okay, I'm assuming, I'm not quite sure, I'm assuming where the White House burnt down, on the other side of that, going on around those woods, that is where y'all are talking about? Like where that strip mall is, where the ambulances are? Is it across from that, in that wooded area?
Right. Ms. Williams has a map that you can look at, and so there won't be any doubt.
That's correct. Right, it's kind of like a little strip in there of woods. So how many, if you built apartments or something in there, how many could you get in there? How many would it be? 10 to 18?
Yes.
And that would probably be, what, two-story? Yeah, but most probably be two-story. That's a lot, that's a lot. 10 to 18 more families in that area would be a lot, a lot more family. I'm not, um, y'all got to have one, what, one more meeting?
No, see, it leaves us and goes to the city council. So after our recommendation, one way or the other, then it goes to city council, so...
Okay. So will they kind of go by what y'all recommend?
Well, they go either way.
Y'all going to go our way, right?
They go either way.
I'm pleased. Usually, and I'm going to be honest, this is what I think. From what I've seen in the past, and I've always lived here, you come to these meetings, and most of the time, and have you say so, but they're going to vote the way they want to. And it's probably us coming here and saying how we feel, I feel like it's a waste of time.
No, it's not a waste of time.
I feel like the council is...
Your voice is going to be heard.
I hope not. I hope it's not a waste. I mean, surely, y'all could build, I mean, they can build something else back there, instead of putting something like this, 18 more, you know, families back there, apartments or whatever. There's got to be, I mean, it's got to be somewhere else, and not to mess up the Orchard and some of the other places, like, like he said, Little Rowwood, I mean, that is one busy little street. So I mean, whatever, but that's, that's just my opinion.
Okay, well, thank you.
No, you're welcome.
Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Barbara Reed, and I'm at 200 Old Orchard Way. I've been there almost three years, and I moved from the county, next door to you, Calhoun, to be closer to the city. And when I found the Orchard, I was very pleased, because it sits apart from the city. The only problem that I find with it is that there is a congestion outside on Hillsborough Road. And I feel what I hear tonight is setting up for a disaster, because you're dealing with people who are going to work, and I don't know if you know the area, but that street, Hillsborough, is a shortcut from Broughton over to Columbia Road, and there's traffic there all day long. There is no period when there's no traffic. And trying to get out of the Orchard would make us prisoners, almost, because as older people, we're very cautious about our driving, and sometimes things happen, even where we don't see traffic as well as other younger people. And I just see a lot of, you know, a lot of disasters coming forth from this. At the end of Hillsborough, there is the back of that strip mall. Ambulances, short buses, small cargo cars go in and out of there, and that also adds to the congestion. I don't see in my mind where an 18-unit facility or homes would add to the property line, the value of the property, or even to the community. I feel and see it as a deterrent, and something that would make it harder to live in. And I don't like, I don't like it, number one. And number two, you said that someone else decides? You take your opinion from what we have said here tonight?
Well, the way it works is, you come before the Planning Commission.
That's you.
That's us.
Okay.
And we vote yes or no, and then it leaves us and goes to city council.
Okay.
So it's great to come here tonight, we love to hear from everybody, but reach out to your city councilman also.
Okay.
That would be your next step.
Okay, so when you go, may I just take a moment of privilege? When you go to speak to them, you're going to report what you heard tonight?
They'll hear everything that was said tonight.
Is it recorded?
And who spoke tonight, and our vote tonight. And then normally, they base their decision on the out... And then normally, they base their decision on the outcome of this meeting. Not 100%, but normally they do.
Okay. Do we get to vote tonight or anything?
No, you don't get to vote.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing?
Can I speak again?
Yes, please.
Okay. Again, I'm Matt Burleson, 1340 Hillsborough Road. And I feel like maybe I can bring some actual empirical data to this discussion now after hearing what Ms. Williams said about the lot size and the projected number of units that could potentially be built upon that lot size. Having firsthand knowledge of other multi-unit developments, one in particular, which is located in Clarendon County, beginning April 1st, has assigned three parking spots to every unit within the 72-unit complex, which theoretically, if that were to be the case with the 10 to 15, or 10 to 18, excuse me, unit development, you could be potentially adding 30 to 54. I got an Alabama public education, so you may want to double-check that math. But 30 to 54 cars additionally on a road that already holds three and a half. My Alabama public education serves me pretty well, saying that's not a great idea, especially unless an easement or some sort of ingress or egress would be able to be accessible from Columbia Road to try to alleviate some pressure from the already nightmare that is Little Street in Hillsborough in the mornings. Have you ever tried to turn left off of Little Street onto 178? I read War and Peace twice the other morning trying to do that. So it's already a congested, cluttered nightmare. I could not imagine adding potentially 30 to 54 more cars every single morning trying to do that same thing and thinking that would be a good idea.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Curry Sandu, 1148 Barfield Street. I'm the owner of said parcel. I understand all their concerns. We could go 10 to 18 units, be a max of 36 vehicles. I understand about privacy and cutting down trees. We're in a position that it's a strong possibility that even though we could maximize 18 units, we could possibly do 10 to 12, leave a privacy fence, build a brick wall, whatever we need to do to make the residents on Hillsborough feel a little bit more comfortable. Just in relation to Orchard, the subdivision where it looks like about 30%, 40% of these good-paying citizens of Orangeburg live in, you know, just if you built out the rest of the lots where they live right now, I think there's about five or six or maybe eight remaining. I think you got two or three-bedroom, minimum three bedrooms, I think, in each of those houses. So that's a total of six cars. You build that out, that's 18 more cars. So it's really just, it's just traffic all the way around. We gotta deal with it every day, and I understand that. But I'm willing to say, look, I could go 18 if I want to. I might can push it to 20, just given the lot size. But I'm willing to just back that down. I think it's a great location for units. I think it's a great location for upscale units. These aren't gonna be $400, $50, $60. I've just been in the business a long time, that the higher you go up in rent, you're just gonna get a better class of people. I want to bring people closer to the city where they can have access, just like everybody in this room does, to better grocery stores, maybe a better school district, maybe just better access. That's why everyone back here lives where they live. It's a great location. So, you know, I think we're in a position to do that. You know, also, I know the city wants to grow. I know the city wants to expand. You know, just, it's a good tax revenue. It's roughly probably 12, 15 grand a year with no infrastructure costs from the city. So, and it's also bringing in additional people to the city that possibly wouldn't be able to live in that surrounding area. And the comprehensive plan that the city of Orangeburg does have, it does encourage this type of development. I think if it's controlled, if it's flexible, which I'm willing to be, I think it could be probably a pretty good fit for the community overall. I totally understand. I have been in their shoes before with a developer. Sometimes it works out where the developer wins, sometimes the constituents win. But I'm a pretty flexible individual, so I'd be willing to accommodate and have as many hearings as we need to have and as many posters we need to put up and as many Dukes Barbecue I need to cater to bring it down the street, whatever we need to do. But I think it'll be a viable option. So I appreciate your time tonight, appreciate you listening to me, and thanks for putting this on.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
Everytime. I live right down the corner, 1693 Hillsborough Road. Building apartments or duplex is a very bad idea. I might be legally blind, I still see all this traffic. I see the wrecks right there on Little Street. Nobody slows down. You can put a stop sign out there, a speed limit sign, nobody pays attention. I sit there and see cars racing up and down Hillsborough. And you want to build apartments? All you want to do is look at money. You want to do some, put some there, another house, not no duplex. Or build it somewhere else, not right there. There's plenty of land on the other side of Chestnut. They're building houses over there. Put it over there. Traffic can sit down, be right there on Chestnut.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak at the public hearing? Ma'am, you've had two times, I can't give you another time. No, you're gonna have to come forward again. You're gonna have to come forward so we get your name again, but you're gonna have to make it quick now.
Joanne Lightfoot, the Orchard. I just want to know, so we will not be able to attend the actual council meeting?
You will.
We will?
You will.
Okay, I thought when you were talking that y'all would tell them everything we said.
No, ma'am. You're welcome to attend their meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Uh-huh. Ms. Williams, will it be in the paper? You can't hear? Oh, she can't hear. You can't hear her? Ms. Williams, you want to speak into the microphone so they can hear you?
Good evening, everyone. My name is Ms. Williams. I'm with the city of Orangeburg. And with reference to the city council meetings, we meet the first and third Tuesdays of each month at 6:00. So everyone is welcome to attend. Depending upon what is stated here tonight and what the outcome is, we will have a public hearing regarding this topic. So you're welcome to attend and voice your concerns again at that meeting. Yes, yes, this would be on the agenda, yes. I'm sorry. Right, the address of the council building is 933 Middleton Street. It is right next door to City Hall. So Stevenson Auditorium, City Hall, same building. It's the building right next door.
Okay. Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? Is there anyone else to speak at the public hearing? I would like to thank all of you who have participated in the public hearing. We will now close the public hearing and move into our regular meeting. Our first item of business is to approve the minutes of February 15th, 2024. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve the minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, the ayes have it. Under new business, to consider a zoning district map change from A1 residential, single-unit district, to A2 residential, multi-unit district for the following property, 1700 Hillsborough Road, tax map number 0174-17-08-003. Ms. Williams, would you like to address the commission?
Sure. Just wanted to say that Mr. Sandu met our requirements for rezoning. Therefore, we posted signs on the property and made sure that the announcement was in the paper as well as posted on our website.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions on the panel for Ms. Williams? I will entertain a motion to either approve or deny the request.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request to change the properties on 1700 Hillsborough. The current district mapping zoning for a single home is appropriate for the area.
Do I have a second? All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed, the ayes have it. Is there any other business to come before this commission? Seeing none, I make a motion to adjourn. Can I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your hand. All opposed.